Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founder of Get Oiling Greg Kilwin. Hey Greg.
Hey everyone, really glad you're here today.
We have the incredible Julie and Colin on our team with us here today as well. Hey guys.
Hello, everyone.
How you doing everybody?
So today we have some really exciting stuff to share with you. We've got some fun updates that we'll let Greg talk about up here at the top of the call, but our topic today, what we're going to be getting into in training is another new feature in the system that allows you to track video viewing and some really specific controls that you can employ around it. They're going to help you increase your enrollments, make your sharing more effective, and most importantly, make the follow-up take less of your time. If you've ever struggled with maybe chasing someone down it to confirm that they've looked at information they said they would look at, we're going to show you how you can release yourself from that worry forever using this feature in your Get Oiling system. But yeah, let's go ahead and get into the chat though first. Hi, everybody. Let us know where you're coming in from. We're excited to have you. This is a live call that we host every Thursday at noon US Eastern Time. It's for any young living brand partner anywhere in the world. You can learn more about how to use Get Oiling and of course use features like what we'll be talking about here today. But you're going to find that there is some little Easter eggs in here for you if you are just simply looking for a way to grow more effectively. Today we're going to be talking about prospecting and sharing. There's a lot here, not just about these features in the system. So make sure you turn off your distractions, be present here. I think you're going to walk away with a little bit more confidence, maybe with some excitement about sharing that you might not have walked in with. So we're going to pop out a video here real quick. I'm going to get into our little bit of housekeeping, then we're going to toss it over to Greg for this this update that he'll share and then we're going to get into today's training. So again, big welcome. Really, really thrilled to have you here today. We're going to talk about how you can increase enrollments with video and we're going to talk about the full system that you can follow and how you can utilize automations to get all this done. So today we're going to talk about the fastest way to create momentum with sharing, young living and enrolling new customers and team, and how to get it done with Get Oiling. And of course, we have live help and Q and A as always. If you have questions, if you're here looking for help today, even if it has nothing to do with today's stated topic, please go ahead and add those questions to the Q and A. We are here for you on this call, no matter what that question might be. If you're watching this as a replay, you can go to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession to get on this list and be someone who joins on these live calls that we host on Thursdays. And if you'd like one-on-one help, like one person has signed up for today, we dedicate the second half of our calls to working with you. So you can actually reserve some of that time ahead of time if you'd like. That's getoiling.com/websitereview. And finally, if you would like for someone to take the work off your hands, get your website built for you, set up some of your systems, automations, things like what we're going to be talking about here today, go to getoiling.com/concierge. She'll learn more about our team and set up a no obligation call where you can discuss your project and get a quote. All right, without further ado, I want to hop over to Greg, who is going to share a couple of really exciting updates in the system. Greg's the guy that built this thing and continues to make it more and more awesome. So Greg, what do you have for us this week? Hey Greg, I think you're muted.
Hey, you're absolutely right.
Gotcha.
I'm over here talking away and nobody can hear me. Yeah, so we've got a couple of features, a couple of new changes here. I'll show you. The first one is an update for more permissions on the My Team feature. So like if you have an assistant sharing your account and you have a separate login for them or some other person helping you out, there is some extra granularity there. And there's also a change with our page builder. The carousel has a new automatic height feature that can be useful in some cases. So let me show you. First, the My Team feature, if you hover over your menu in the upper right and click My Team, or you can go down to My Account and click Settings and then click My Team, both will get you to that place. Depending on your plan, there, some of the plans come with free team members, others there are extra charge. But this is useful, like if you're hiring a virtual assistant and you want to have to have them have separate separate email and password, they can do that. You can give them an account and then they don't have, you don't have to share your password and email to get in. It's a little bit more secure if we do it this way. So this My Team feature, this has existed for quite some time, but now there are a couple of new permissions that weren't previously there. So the member area and store checkboxes were not there before. Previously, they were all tied up under My Site. So if you check My Site, it would also give people access to, or this person, access to the member area as well as the store. So now you can separately define access here. So if you check Store, they'll be able to access the store inside the admin area. Of course, they can still visit your store because it's a public website. You know, that doesn't control that at all. It's just the editing of the products and such. So for example, if you just wanted someone to have access to Zoom or blogging and you didn't want to have to have access to the store, you could do that. And the other change here is Member Area. So if Member Area is not checked and they try to click on, close this out here quick. I guess I can't do that. Let me, let me cancel. Yeah, never mind. I'll, I'll show you this here in a minute once I get this added, but. So if you have Member Area checked, now you can have, you can specify what vaults that a person has access to. If you have nothing selected, it automatically gives them access to all the vaults because that's kind of the default. Everyone who's in there has access to all the vaults. But if you select one, it narrows it down. Now this narrows it down or you know, limits their access only inside the member area. So this basically hides discussion rooms. You know, they can't log in. They don't see the vaults in the member area that are not in this list if you have one selected. So this is useful if you have, you know, confidential information. We know some people do one-on-one coaching and they have an assistant perhaps that doesn't want to, or that doesn't need access to those vaults that they didn't want on my coaching on, or maybe you have some, you know, shared vaults that's, you know, multiple team members. Then you don't have to give access to all your other private vaults to those other people. So this, this granular access is pretty nice. If you uncheck the Member Area box, that means they can't even access the Member Area and the admin, but if it is checked, regardless of which vaults they have access to in the Member Area, they can still go and edit and see the content of them over here because it's difficult to separate those out given how the everything is constructed. So hopefully that is useful. And it helps you with, with the permissions that you have. Now, the other change here that I'm going to show you is the inside the page builder. I'll just start with a blank page and add a, add the carousel. We had a, a demo on this some time ago about the interactive carousel, these, you know, accordion carousel and countdown timer that I've relatively recently added to the page builder. But the carousel now, there's been some change or some people that have content that doesn't quite fit within the range of this slider. So now there's an automatic checkbox that basically makes the carousel the height of all of the slides or the maximum of all the slides. So this can be useful in some cases. You can see it makes a big difference here because of the size of the image. So play around with it. If you have a carousel, you know, it works best, the auto works best if you have a carousel that is custom content where you have some text in there, typically with an image, it doesn't really, isn't needed. But if you have the custom content, then the auto height can be quite useful if you've got several lines of text in there. So yeah, those are the updates for today. If, you know, let us know if you have any questions. We'll be happy to sort those out.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Greg. Those are great, especially I'm really excited to see the ones that pertain to to your, your member area, right? So for those of us who maybe have a team and I don't mean like your network marketing team, like on your, your young living team, but if you maybe have a VA, right? If you have someone who is adminning for a course or program that you have, et cetera. This is a really great way to really dial in those permissions. All right. So let's get into today's training. Let's talk about how we can become more effective in our sharing and really build up momentum and how we get that done. Now I'm curious, head over into the chat and share. Do you have a system around how you share and follow up? What does that look like for you? So if you know that you want to share your own living with someone, what does that look like for you? Is it, is it even a system, right? Can you define what the steps are that you follow? Now ask someone who has built several network marketing teams to large duplicable organizations, right? Folks who are able to duplicate success. This is something that I learned pretty early on that you need to know, you need to be able to define, these are the steps that we follow. And if you do the steps the same way each time, you get better at each part of the system and you can begin to identify the weak points of the system so that you can improve, right? And if you want to be able to duplicate, if you love sharing and you get good at sharing and you want people who want to be successful in this to, to be able to replicate your success, you've got to be able to have this stuff defined, right? So if you don't have this, the very first thing I want to encourage you to do today is to consider codifying what it is that you do, right? And I will give you my formula. I'll give you what not only has worked for me, but there are tons of folks who are out there coaching on this that's, that are teaching stuff that works incredibly well. You may find some of this familiar in fact. So look, the fastest way in this business to invite, share and close at scale is with video. Now obviously we know that someone having a true product experience is one of the most effective ways to share one-on-one, right? But when we think about the amount of time it takes us to be able to sit down one-on-one with a person in this very busy day and age that we live in, everybody's always got something or 20 things going on. It's really difficult to get that one-on-one FaceTime with somebody so that you can get that full attention, have them have a product experience and then for you to follow up. And so what this means for your young living business is that you grow really slowly, right? Well, what if you wanted to change that? And what if you wanted to change that without having to adopt some kind of toxic hostile culture mentality that none of us really have anymore? There is a way, excuse me, there is a way to get this done. And the way to get it done quickly with as many people as possible is with video. Because you don't have to show one-on-one. You don't have to accommodate a bunch of people's schedules, right? You can just, excuse me, share a video and get it done. So let's talk about what sharing and closing with video looks like. So we begin this process by inviting someone who has an interest, right? Someone who maybe has a problem that you are going to help them try to solve, whatever that might look like. You're inviting them to review information. This is the point at which you say, hey, if I could show you a way to solve this problem we've been discussing, would you be interested in checking out some information? They say yes, right? There's obviously other videos. We've got tons of other training that talk about how you get to that point in a conversation. But you get to the point where you say, hey, I've got something that shows blah, blah, blah. Would you be interested in checking it out? They say yes. Now after that happens, you can choose to, hey, do you have 20 minutes right now? Base this on how long the video is that you have, that you're going to use. Do you have 20 minutes right now? When do you have 20 minutes within the next couple of days, whatever? Set it, set an appointment. This just makes them take this whole process more seriously, right? If you needed to hire a doctor or an attorney, you wouldn't just go off the seat of your pants for it. You would set a date and time to meet, have people respect your time similarly. Then send at that time, that date and time, send them the link. Don't send it when they say I'd like to check it out. Set an appointment for this. Just do me a favor and do that. People will take it more. People will take it more seriously and they will respect your time if you create these parameters. So you send them this link to a video presentation. They get to watch the video and then you can follow up with them after they've watched the video. Ideally, this video, it's talking about product. It's talking about why Young Living is different. It's giving a compelling reason for them to say yes right now. And maybe it even talks about the opportunity and how you can make money as a brand partner, right? After they've watched the video, you want to follow up with them. You're going to seal the deal with a couple of simple questions and I'll share with you here in just a bit, but this is essentially it. You get to a point in a conversation where you say, I've got a video that shares some information about this. Would you want to check it out? They say yes. You say, when do you have 40 minutes, 20 minutes, whatever that looks like? You agree to the date and time, you meet, you send them the video. After they watch the video, you ask them a couple of questions about the video. Ask them if they're ready to get started and you're off to the races. Pretty simple so far, right? Does this sound familiar? Have any of you used video in this way before? If you have, then I'm going to go ahead and call out the elephant in the room here. This can be an effective system. And if you go at it with volume, meaning you're asking lots of people all the time, do you want to check out some information and you are holding to that setting an appointment? And you're being really efficient about your execution with this, meaning you follow this system so precisely, religiously continually that this is how you work. This is effective. I have personally done this. I've had teams that have duplicated this, but there is a point in this system where things fall apart. The elephant in the room here, how do you know that they've actually watched the video? And how much of that video did they actually watch? Think about that. You've asked somebody, hey, do you want to check this out? You send them the video and unless you're sitting there next to them or you're on Zoom and you press play to watch it together, how do you know that they've actually watched it? And how do you feel when you have to follow up and be like, hey, did you, did you watch that video you said you were going to watch? How awkward is that, right? And, and what if, what if they're not sitting, what if they're not telling the truth? What if they're like, oh yeah, I watched it and they only watched the first two minutes? Right? How, how do you know? This is where we cease to be effective because we're not there. And in order for us to be effective, we have to be a lot more present than we really ought to be because we really need to be making sure that we are spending our time, our active vital working hours and minutes with people who are serious, right? Not people who aren't taking us seriously, but people who are treating you like the professional that you are, right? So how do you know? This is the place where this falls apart, especially if you aren't totally precise about the system. Maybe you're just starting to use it, right? So Get Oiling has figured this out and that's what we are here to talk about today. We have a new feature in our system that allows you to not only track how your contact has interacted with the video link that you've sent them, but for you to be able to automate what following up looks like. You can create, and this is, you see this view here up at the top. If you go to your videos, your video manager, there is an option to share with link, right? So if you click that box, then you see this get link option. When you click get link, you can choose to get a shareable link for a specific contact. You put that contact in here and you can choose to track the percentage of the video watched. You can also track if they clicked the link. If they started playing the video, if they only watched some of the video and you can specify what the percentage is. And you can have the system in any of these cases shoot you a text, send you an app notification, send you an email to let you know, hey, Ashley, just click this link, right? And so now you know that you want to try to make yourself available within the next 20 minutes. Because you want to call that person if they've watched 80% of the video. So you can check all of these and you can set up all you want on all of these. You can modify their tags to indicate that they have watched something. You can set an automation to run here. Right? And you can put conditional automations here. Think about the depth of this. And for those of you who are not familiar with automations, maybe plug your ears for a second here, but I'm talking to my people who geek out over this stuff real quick. So imagine you apply a follow-up plan to your person after you send them this video, right? Are you sorry? You apply an automation to this contact. So you're going to, you're going to send them this video. You're going to apply an automation to them. And that automation is maybe going to send them a campaign that's going to shoot them a text that says, hey, just wanted to make sure, you know, you, we, you know, we had talked about watching that video, you know, let me know if you need me to resend the link, right? But maybe if they click the link, so if you have this like track when the contact clicks the link, if you have that selected and you've got an automation applied there, when they click the link, the next automation is going to prevent that campaign from even sending if they, you know, have in fact clicked the link, right? If they have only watched a certain percentage of the video, maybe you want a message to go back to them and say, hey, I noticed you were able to check out some of the video. When do you think you'll be able to watch the rest of it, right? And that can go out automatically again, because you can attach automations to these. And after they've watched a sufficient percentage of the video, so think like, you know, if the video is X amount of minutes long and about 80, 85% of the way through, maybe 70% of the way through, that's really when the pitch is delivered, right? That's when the really compelling, like they need to have made it this far to be able to make a decision. You put that percentage in here after the contact watches some of the video. And so that way you know, we can follow up and have a serious conversation if they have in fact watched this much of the video. How cool is that, right? So you don't have to waste your time trying to chase down people who haven't taken this seriously, who haven't watched the video. Right? Or you can provide space so you aren't hounding people, having to remember to follow up with people, et cetera. Your system can tell you, this person just watched that video. You should probably reach out to them right now, right? Oh, it's so cool. So imagine how much more effectively you could spend your time prospecting and inviting, right? You're sharing Young Living with so many more people because you've got an effective system to follow up, right? The moment somebody starts watching that video, you can know, hey, they're watching that video right now. Because when's the best time to follow up on information? Not a week after they saw something, not four hours after they saw something, immediately after they saw that information, right? Because you got to strike when the iron is hot. So you can be so much more effective if you just add this step into how you're sharing, provide that information. And then be ready to show up and have those conversations with them after they reviewed the information. So if you could automatically follow up with these folks based on the actions they take, how much more effective would you be? How many more people could you share with? On a daily basis, on a weekly basis, how would your team grow as a result of that? This is so exciting. So let's talk about how you can get started with a system around this feature. First, I want you to find or create a video that shares Young Living. You don't have to be the person who is presenting in the video and in fact, it is my position that it should not be you. Unless you are a diamond, crown diamond, and you are creating these resources for your team to use, it is best for you to be pointing to someone else who is delivering this information because that is duplicable. Being the expert is not. All right. So find a video that exists. Or of course, if you can't find one that does what you want it to do, you can make one. I'm just telling you, it's going to be more duplicable for you to let somebody else do the talking. All right. And the thing is, is you can do this with as many videos as you want. If you want to have one of these that is Nisha focused, you can. You want to have one that's thieves focused, you can. You want to have one that's hormone focused, you can. There's an infinite number of ways that you can do this. So if somebody wants to know about balancing their hormones and you, that is your jam and you love talking about balancing hormones, you have this video on balancing hormones and about 80% of the way in, you talk about how you've got to make sure that you are ditching the products, right? And how they can take the next steps by getting in touch with you and setting up a, you know, one-on-one consult where you can help them, you know, get clear on what they need to get rid of and what they need to replace it with. You can have so many of these and you could use this for every angle that you might be using out there to start conversations with people and help solve their problems. So you take that video, you upload it to your video manager and then you create some additional resources to the extent that you want to. You can just simply have the system notify you when they have watched the video, if they've clicked the link, et cetera. But if you want to go, again, this is me whispering to the, the people who geek out on this stuff. You can create things like campaigns and follow-up plans to make sure that you are on top of the process, right? So if you want to send a quick reminder, if they've only watched, you know, if they, if they've clicked it, but they haven't watched enough of it, you can have a message that goes out on your behalf. You don't have to create it every single time. You don't have to think to apply it. It'll do it. You know, if like a few hours later, they haven't watched it, you're going to send that text campaign that's going to be like, hey, do you need me to resend the link? Or do you want to maybe catch up another time? Do you want to reschedule something like that? And of course you can have follow-up plans that remind you to do things internally. Now let's talk about using the system. So the first thing that you're going to do, of course, is to invite someone that you're having a conversation with to review some information, right? You guys are talking about a problem or a goal or something that's important to them and you say, if I could show you a way, if I could show you some information, right? I've got a video that talks about that that might really help you. Would you be interested in checking it out? They say yes. You set that time at the very least for the share or you say, I've got a 45-minute video. I know it's a little bit long, but this is a really important topic. When would you have the chance to, to watch that? And then chat with me for about 10 minutes after, set up that date and time. And then at that point, you're going to get them that information. You're going to get them that link, right? So you're going to go and like I shared with you and I'll show you step by step in the system here in a moment. You're going to create a shareable link for that contact and you can attach any of those automations, those, you know, do you want to get a text from Get Oiling when they, when they click or when they watch a certain percentage, et cetera? And then you can get notified, at least at the very least, get notified when they write, watch the right percentage of the video. Make sure that it is enough percentage of the video for them to have seen the full pitch so that they can make a decision. All right. And then when they watch it, pick up that phone and call them. Call them when they do. It's way more effective. I know some of us, especially younger folks are like, call, who does that? This is the most effective thing to do. Can you text? If that's the nature of your relationship is texting and you're, and it would be super weird to call, then cool, but I'm really only going to believe you if you're like Gen Z, okay? If you aren't, then you need to pick up that phone and call because it's not weird. You're just self-conscious, right? We got to let that go. And then we're going to let automations handle those other communications such as, did you get to finish watching the video, right? Or hey, I, I noticed that you only watched a little bit of it, right? You let the automations do that. You don't worry about it. You only are bothered when it's time, when the person has done the thing that they need to do to deserve that time from you, right? And I'm not saying that your friend doesn't deserve your time, but where it pertains to your business, everyone, everyone has to behave a certain way to deserve your time, right? Where it comes to your business, we got to have these lines in place, right? All right. So let's talk about how we position the share because this is really important. If you've never used video to share Young Living before, you really want to get clear on how you go about positioning this so that it feels natural and normal to you, right? Very first and most important thing, and this is what you're going to do if you are taking someone to an in-person presentation where someone else is doing the presenting, you edify the resource, you edify the presenter or you edify the video, right? Such as, I've got a video that explains this better than I can. Guys, this is the secret to duplication. Even if you could explain circles around the presenter, you say this. I've got a video that explains this better than I can. You're setting the seeds for duplication here. Or this person knows a lot more about this than I do. And again, that puts you and your friend in the same position next to each other. We're on this journey together. We're doing this together. So much more duplicable than being the Dr. Oils in the room, right? All right. Now let's talk about that three-question follow-up that I mentioned because after someone has successfully reviewed this information and you can use this exact same three-question follow-up, if you have presented information to someone in person or they've been to, you know, a class or something like that, but absolutely 100% after you follow the sequence with having someone review video, you must ask these questions. First, you have to ask an affirmative question whose answer is yes, right? There are psychological studies that have been done, old at this point, but time and time again, it's proven people are more likely to say yes to something after they've already said yes. So the first thing you want to do is ask a question whose answer is yes. So was that awesome or was that awesome? Or that was pretty cool, right? Never, ever, 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 ever say, what did you think? Don't ask an open-ended question. Ask an affirmative question whose answer you know is yes. Okay, that's the first thing. Easy enough, right? Now, if the presentation, if the video that you're using talks about product and opportunity, this is an optional thing for you to include. This is a little bit difficult for Young Living because I think that it really is best to get people on a product track first. But there are folks who are very successful with this piece. So if you do have a video resource that gets into opportunity as well as product, then you can ask the question here, what did you like best? The product, the business or both? Right? And most people, again, if it's a good video, it's talking about, you know, how you can make money, how the product can change your life, can change other people's lives. Most people are going to say both because who doesn't like a little more money in this day and age? Now on a scale of one to 10, this is a question I want you to ask, on a scale of one to 10, where do you see yourself with this in terms of getting started? Scale of one to 10. Now ask them, if they don't say 10, then ask them, what do you need to know to get you to attend? What do we need to work out to get you to attend today? What do you need to know? What do you need to know for you to feel good about getting started? Find out what that is. And then, of course, after you answer that question, or after you offer to connect them with someone who knows more than you, right? Those of you who've been around this industry long enough to remember three-way calls, which I still think people should be doing, right? Get another person on a Zoom call, and they don't have to be your upline. It can just be another person who knows more about young living than the person that you're sitting next to and sharing and living with here. Right? What do you need to know to get to a ten? Let's connect you with that information. And then, of course, after we have shared that information, let's say, are you ready to get started? That's the final, most important third question, alright? Now, let's go take a look at this and see this in action. I'm really interested to see how excited you guys are about this feature. Cause I am super thrilled about it. Um, there is so much you can do here with this. And the simplest path forward, uh, is, is just to have the, the system notify you. That, uh, that somebody has, uh, has, has started watching the video or has watched a certain percentage of it. So let me show you how to find this from the dashboard. When you log into your Get Oiling account. We're gonna look roughly like this, especially like this if it's a Thursday, right? Uh, so we're gonna come over here to our content library and find videos. You're gonna upload your video here. And of course, note how far into the video, uh, is the sort of, uh, sales pitch for the presentation. At what point is that sales pitch complete so that you can set these next steps up accordingly? Now, you're gonna wanna make sure that you have share with link enabled here. We're gonna click get link. We're gonna get a shareable link for a specific contact. We're gonna go find that contact. Here we go. We're going to track the percentage of video watched. I wanna make sure that when the contact starts playing the video, I wanna get a text notification. Uh, I'm not using the app right now, so I'm gonna use the text notification. And I'll go ahead and get email as well, but I, I, I'm gonna, I wanna pay attention to this. If you're actively prospecting, I highly encourage that you just focus on getting texts. Because you're gonna get that straight from the system when this happens. But if you are in your inbox all the time, which I really, I don't encourage anybody to be in their email inbox all the time. Uh, but anyway, choose one of these two. Um, so what we can do here, of course, um, is we can apply an automation if you've created one. Uh, but at the very least, again, when they start playing the video, you want to be on alert, okay? Now, if that person has watched some of the video. Maybe you want to select an automation here that sends them a text campaign. That says, hey, notice you were able to get into some of the video. Do you need me to resend the link? Do you need me to resend the link? And you're not gonna put the link, right? Cause you're creating the link right here. You're not gonna put the link in the campaign that goes into this automation. Uh, but, uh, but you can have a general question, you know, hey, you, you need me to resend you the link, right? Uh, so you can attach that here. Uh, so maybe my pitch takes place at about sixty percent in, and then I talk for another, you know, seven, eight minutes, uh, about the pitch. Uh, and so I think if somebody watches like eighty-five percent of this video, that's sufficient. Um, you know, for whatever reason, they don't complete it. Look, guys, most people don't watch the entirety of videos. Uh, if you have a YouTube channel, you know this to be especially true. So, um, so you don't wanna necessarily have to, um, you know. Get to a hundred percent in order to be able to qualify somebody. Um, but if you want someone to, uh, you know, if you wanna make sure that they've watched a sufficient amount. Uh, then you do have these ways of connecting automations to send out communications. Again, engaging them automatically on your behalf to get them to, uh, to connect. Now, if they watch it a hundred percent, then I wanna get texted right away, right? So here, in this case, if they watch some of the video. Maybe they, maybe they watch less than eighty-five percent of the video. Maybe they, they've only watched up to the point where I get into the pitch at like sixty percent, right? Um, I want to send an automation that reminds them, uh, to. Here, I'm, I'm just gonna grab one from in here. Obviously, there's lots of, I'm gonna pop this in here. And pretend like this is an automation that applies the campaign that we want. So I'm gonna apply a campaign at this point and remind them, or, or basically go back and ask, you know, hey, uh, I noticed you weren't able to complete the video. Did you want me to resend the link to you, right? Or did you wanna reschedule? So I'll do that here. I don't wanna necessarily be notified if they only made it this far, cause I only wanna really talk to them. If they've made it to the sufficient percentage here, right? So if they made it to eighty-five percent, I want a text notification so that I can call them right there and be like, hey. How awesome was that? And then get into, um, you know, what did you like best and that kind of thing, alright? So, um, so this is how I would personally set it up. So notify me when they start watching it, great. Send them a message if they have only watched a certain percentage of the video. And we could even go lower on this, right? Um, or you could even attach that here. If they start playing the video, you just wanna make sure that whatever that email is, is, uh, is removed. Um, or that, uh, the automation is removed from them and that campaign doesn't deliver if they, in this case, finish the video. So, um, so what you could do here is maybe have an automation that removes the campaign from this one, right? Uh, so that they don't get any of those, like, hey, did you watch it? Emails, right? Or texts. So yeah, that's, that's what I would do. This is so exciting. So you go get link. And, uh, and so now we've got the link and we can go and send it. So let me go back over here to the dashboard. Um, we're going to go and send a text. And I'm going to, uh, paste that, uh, you know, paste that, uh. That link, that trackable link right here. And of course, throughout the process, depending on how I have that set up. I am able to see exactly what that person has done. Did they click the link? How much of the video did they watch, right? And, uh, and of course, I can have, uh, the system follow up on my behalf throughout the process. Super exciting, right? Okay, um, Camelia says, uh, so we should not present or say anything on the video, just third party. If you don't have a video that says and does what you want to have said and done, then you can absolutely create a video here. I'm just advocating for you leaning on resources that already exist. Because it's actually more duplicable for you to not be mom, right? For you to not be doctor, for you to not be expert. If you want a team that feels empowered to go out and do what you just did, you need to make what you just did really simple. And the easy thing to do is say, hey, friend, I got a video that really helped me. It opened my eyes to some things. Why don't you check it out? Do you have twenty minutes and then we can follow up for another ten? They say yes, you send them the video, you edify the person, you say, hey, this is a person that I've learned from for the last five years. They're really knowledgeable on this stuff. They know way more than I do and they say this better than I could. And you send that to them. Your friend could turn around and do that same thing, that same day, in their own words without being taught, right? But if you're the one in the video, they're gonna think when you share that you're, that, that they need to go make a video like this too, right? So I don't generally advocate for you being the one to make this sales video. Um, that doesn't mean that you can't, you certainly could. Um, it's just if somebody else has one, maybe use it, uh, if you think it's good. Okay, uh, and you also asked, uh, Camelia, uh, will we be hosting at Aroma Sharing, uh, convention this year? We will be at Aroma Sharing, uh, I will be, Julie will be. Uh, so we certainly look forward to seeing you there. Definitely, uh, keep a lookout. Um, through Aroma Sharing about their, their schedules and all of the information from them. Alright, uh, will you get a notification when they hit sixty percent and they hit eighty-five percent or only, um, so. You basically just have to choose whatever those are for you, right? Uh, so if we go back over to the video. Let's see. Yeah, you've got multiple options here to choose from. So this get link, uh, shareable link for a contact. Gotta go through this whole process to create a unique one for each person. So, uh, we wanna track the percentage of video watched, and you can go in if they do any of these things. Um, you can have an email go out to you, a text go out to you, you could have automations run, tags be applied, et cetera. Alright, so you can, for any of these things. So, um, and the thing is, right, so we can say. So what, what I was explaining earlier is, let's just say for this one down here at the bottom, finishing the video. In this particular instance, I'm gonna say is they have finished the video sufficiently if they watched eighty-five percent of it. Maybe the last few minutes is, you know, some cool stuff. It's maybe a little rah rah. It's, you know, getting people excited about possibilities, but they've got the meat of the information that they need. To me, that's sufficient. So finishing the video can mean eighty-five percent. In that case, I wanna get notified. But if they've only watched up to a certain percentage of it. And I know that they need to watch the rest of it, right? So maybe I'm gonna say if they've only watched thirty percent of the video, or if they've only watched twenty percent of the video. Or maybe I'm not gonna do this one, and it's just gonna be that they started playing the video, right? So I'm gonna have an automation here that applies a campaign that reminds them to come back. Uh, maybe after an hour or two, uh, and, and that would be like a text campaign. And then, um, and then this automation would remove the campaign from this one if I wanted to do that. But again, you don't have to go like super down the nerd rabbit hole here. Just get notified. Just get notified, uh, you'll know and you'll know who to take action on. And, uh, and of course, if you really love the idea of getting into deep automations here, just know that you got the option if you really wanted to. Um, are we looking for third-party videos on YouTube? So what I would recommend, Sean, uh, is perhaps, uh, maybe let's take this conversation into our Facebook group. Uh, if anyone has one that they particularly love, another cool thing, maybe. Uh, anyone in this community who feels particularly, you know, blessed at being able to deliver such presentations. If you would like to make one that you can share with the community. Again, the person who makes the video doesn't have to be a young living celebrity. And they don't have to be in your upline. It just needs to be somebody who does a good job of explaining this stuff, who says this stuff. And you can edify them. Right? You don't have to be able to get them on the phone, right? You don't have to be able to introduce them to the person, just so long as it's good. So, um, that's, yeah, that's really it. So I, I, maybe you guys. Um, let's start a thread in our, in our Facebook group. If you've got a video that you love. Um, then definitely, uh, definitely do that. Another thing that you could do. And this would be a little bit less effective, is to maybe take a, um. Maybe a recording from a, a Zoom class that you gave. This would be a great way to repurpose any of your online classes that you've had. So maybe you're teaching a class on ditch and switch. Maybe you're teaching a class on hormones or on greenwashing or something like that. Use this for that purpose. You're having a conversation with somebody and, and you, you just wanna make sure that you know, like, how far into the video is enough. For them to have seen for us to be able to have a real conversation where we can close. If you know where that is, then set this video up to share with somebody, and that's all you gotta do. Reuse the stuff that you already have. And I know just about everybody here has had some kind of online class, right? All of us have had some kind of a, I got on Zoom and I talked about a thing. So use those. Okay, it doesn't have to be some slick sales video. It doesn't have to be hyper-produced. You just need to have something that says what needs to be said, that solves a problem, that's interesting enough for the person you wanna share it with. And you need to know how much of it they need to have seen for it to be effective as a tool for you to take that conversation into getting them started. There you go. Yeah, see, Sean, that's a great way for you to use, use video. And o- other videos you have sitting in, in your, uh, in your computer as well, you could use, you know, for funnels and classes too. But if you're having like direct prospecting conversations with folks, this is gonna be a really great way to make that effective. Alright, so we have, um. Let me see, should we introduce anything on the video or just speak or text them the info and send them the video? So Camelia, my experience with this is, um, I wanna, I, I generally wanna get them on the phone. Uh, and I wanna say, you know. I, I, obviously, we, we've had our conversation up to this point. Before I even send them the link, I wanna have them on the phone real quick. And I wanna say, alright, I'm gonna get you this link. Let me tell you a little bit about, uh, this and, and the person or whatever, right? That's your opportunity to edify. Edification is always going to be best received in person or like vocally. So if it's Zoom or you're speaking to them on the phone, text just, y- you, you can edify via text. It just doesn't land as heavily, right? So I would encourage you to maybe hop on the phone and say, alright, when we hop off the phone, I'm gonna shoot you this link. You're able to watch this now, right? And I'll give you a call after you're done watching it. That would be my recommendation. Um, but really, it's just a matter of however you can do it. Most effective is going to be to begin and end this with a phone call or a Zoom call, in my opinion. Okay, thank you so much for your patience, Terry. I'm so excited to chat with you. Um, are we talking about your website today?
Yes.
Yay, awesome. I love your website. Okay, tell us more. How can we help?
Well, after, you know, you had talked with Brandy and me back a few months ago, she and I've been busy. So, I want you to now go over it and, and, uh, tell us if we have accomplished. Um, you know, what you were suggesting, and then of course, any other suggestions for us.
Okay, okay. I just looked at this for the first time since you guys have made those changes and I'm so super excited about this. Okay, divinely designed for terrific health, mind, body, and spirit. So the first, first thing, uh, we do want to address, um, this, um, this image. You have set as the background of this section, and you see how it's kind of moved off to the, to the side here. Depending on the, you know, the, the width of, of someone's screen. And maybe, cause I'm on a gigantic screen, I don't know, maybe this is, it's probably what it looked like. But you do wanna make sure that, um, that you are designed for, there we go, alright? So that would be like a, like a tablet view perhaps, going into mobile, alright, that's good. So what I would do in this top section on your desktop view is just make sure that it is, um, it's centered horizontally. Cause right now, it appears that it might be, uh, right aligned.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's, that's the first thing. And, and you, you have done the right thing in like making it, uh, mobile responsive, which is great. And I love, um, I love the message that you're kind of conveying here with the images. Um, alright, and this is, this is a fantastic section here. Ooh, wellness and liter- literacy thrive, yes. Oh, I love this. Okay, so this takes you to your about page. We'll go check that out in a second. Beautiful. Tell them they're in the right place. Fantastic, alright, and this is going to a, another thing we'll check out in a second. This is great. Fantastic, we got a testimonial here. Reading, awesome. Affirmations, beautiful, oh, this is so good. Oh my goodness, you, you guys really, you really put it together here. Awesome. So you've got different services. You've got some testimonials. Ah, you guys are doing great work. Alright, so here's our about page, awesome. Love this image. This is great. And you guys, this is a, this is a template that's in the Brand My Business Workshop, by the way. If anybody likes this, this is, is something you can actually grab in the Success Academy. Um, so, so we've, we've got a Facebook, we've got our blog. I wanna take a look at that. And then we're sending them also to the fourteen-day reset, great.
The blog has not changed. I haven't done anything yet to the blog. Um, I haven't added anything else, been working on the other things.
Oh, well, that's okay. I still wanna scroll through this so everybody can see what a really great blog looks like. It's, it looks really good. You've done a great job here.
Brandy.
Really, really, uh, Brandy has done a fantastic job.
Yes.
Alright, about this. This looks so good, yes. So the only, like, a- and this, this is just, this is just a nitpick, Terry, just the tiniest nitpick. Um. The most effective websites on the internet. Say more in fewer words. So you have, this is well-formatted. None of it is too much. It's absolutely beautiful. And I know that you're constantly on a journey to improve. So the only real recommendation I would have here, aside from like, you know, changing this image up to like center it a little bit more on desktop. Is, is find a way to compel people to take a next step in fewer words. Um, because there's, there is a tendency that we have. When we arrive on a page, when we receive an email, what have you, if it looks like a lot to read. Sometimes we just walk away from it, even if it's relevant to us, right? And, um, at which, you know, irony here is that you, you know, you help, you help kids like become better readers. But, uh, but the fact is, is that our, our brains really like being lazy. We like pictures, uh, we like things being told to us. Uh, but, but we want, uh, it's more satisfying to our brain if, if that message is delivered in fewer words. So that's, it's, it's the tiniest, tiniest, like, it's not even a criticism, honestly. Um, it is just, um, you know, if, if you want to consider, uh, consider making tweaks and improvements. That would be the direction that I would go. Alright, um, one thing that you wanna make sure you're doing here in the menu, uh, where you have favorites. I don't know if you see this down in the, the left-hand corner, uh, where you've just got a, um, a hashtag or a pound sign after your website URL. Um, that's taking you, um, like, th- this is actually hyperlinked. So you can make this in the menu, um, not clickable, right? like, th- this is actually hyperlinked. So you can make this in the menu, um, not clickable, right? You can make this not a, a clickable link. It doesn't have to go anywhere because you have these places you're sending them, which appear to be correct links. But you do wanna maybe address that. Um, same here. Um, these are all fine. You just wanna make sure that this itself up at the top isn't a link. Yeah, that's gonna be true. So that's happening on favorites, reading, uh, terrific health, uh, work with me, and contact. So this section, um, you wanna make sure that these, these top items are not links themselves. Uh, but that they are, um, just, uh, you know, it's, it's a listing of links down here.
So, thank you. What would you recommend, I mean, just looking at it, that I try to say less, or use fewer words, but actually get more?
Yeah, yeah. So here would be an example. Um, if we can use this much, or maybe even three bullet points here. And then, you know, a, a statement like this. Like, that's, that it's, it's essentially, we, we just wanna reduce the volume. Um, and again, this is optimizing something that you've, there's, there's nothing wrong with what you have here. Um, but if you want to get a greater response, a greater return on what you've done here. Um, that is a, an optimizing recommendation.
Okay.
Is there anything else in particular that you've changed that you want to take a look at? I mean, I love the homepage and and the about page. It's fantastic.
Well, I mean, that was the biggest thing, I think, that you had told us, you know, was to try to create a homepage that actually brought everything together. With, and you picked up on what my, my deep desires, you know, are, so.
Yeah, no, you, um, you guys have nailed that. Just absolutely nailed that. Yeah, cause when, when we came here before, it was gorgeous, uh, but it was, um, kind of unclear who this was for and sort of what the beating heart is behind it. And you've, you've, that's figured out. This is great. It's more than clear who you're here for, how you help them. And you still have the ability to kind of show what could be the disparate things, you know, like, you know, teaching, reading versus doing raindrop therapy, right, or massage therapy. These things don't necessarily feel like they connect. Uh, but when you, you bring that umbrella under, you know, this, you are divinely designed for terrific health in all of these areas. And I can help you in all of these areas. Now that starts to really make sense. And again, it's just, it's really beautiful, like, you and Brandy, the vision and and the work here has come together really, really beautifully.
Thank you.
Yeah, you should be proud, as should she.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely. Really, really, really nice. Awesome. Yeah, and anything else?
I can't think of anything. No, I think Randy, Randy got some, we need to discuss that I don't necessarily remember.
All right, yeah, uh, you guys feel free to shoot me an email, uh, if you want. Uh, or Brandy, obviously, is welcome to come out at any point as well. Um, she's obviously doing great work here. Awesome. Well, thank you so much for sharing and, um, and and really, again, like, this, this is something worthy of praise. Um, okay, Brandy says, uh, they're links only. Um, okay, but maybe that's something we can kind of investigate. I don't know, um. These up here, where they're showing up, um, I don't know. Uh, a team, uh, these are going to, like, these are actually hyperlink here. Um, as, uh, like, home, as the homepage with like a, a hashtag. As opposed to just being a dropdown menu, these are actually linking. So we may need, we need to look into that. Let me see. Let me see if I can pull this up real quick. We can take a look. Okay. Okay, so this is gonna be in your menu. So here. Yeah, no link, just a menu. How do we fix that?
So was it doing something if you click on it?
Yeah, yeah. So this is actually, um, so here, reading, if we click it, it's, um, what it did a minute ago. Of course, now it's not doing it because I'm, I'm on it. So let's just go to Terry's site. And yeah, if we click on favorites, it actually behaved as a hyperlink at least once, which is weird. And if you hover over, you see where it's down in the bottom left. It's kind of giving that, like, like, this is an actual URL. You see that? Yeah.
Yeah.
Huh. I don't know, maybe, um, maybe Safari is just being special, cause you know, that's always a possibility. Uh, all right, well, I know it appears that there may not be a problem at all. It may, it may just be, um, Mac, the Mac of it all. Um, okay, yeah, no, I thi- I think we're good then. Thanks for coming out again, Terry. Really, really appreciate you showing and sharing. Uh, I hope everybody is inspired by the work you guys have done.
Thank you.
All right, Suzie had a question here. Are all blogs are linked on one page? So yeah, they are. Um, so you have a blog digest in your Get Oiling account. So that's your website dot com or ghettoing slash whatever your username is slash blog. Uh, is going to show the entire digest of your blog, since we're still on Terry's site and it's gorgeous. Let's go take a look. So if we go to the blog. Um, there's, she's got a lovely image up here, up top. Uh, and then from here, we have all of her posts. And all of these posts are, um, these are excerpts, right? So we've got a lovely image. We've got an excerpt and we can click to read more. Um, image excerpt, read more. And we've got, again, it's just really pretty. It's clean. It's well-designed. Great job, you guys. Um, and this is, uh, the, like, the sidebar content. And all of this is editable on the, uh, the blog settings page, uh, which is right over here. I'll just go and show you guys real quick. Um, that's gonna be right here, blog posts. And then settings. And here we can personalize. You can see there's her header. This is the footer. Here's the individual post footer, so this will show up on the individual post. And this is that sidebar content. Right? And so we can see what that looks like over here. There's that image at the top. Here's that sidebar content. And then, um, you can see if we go all the way down to the bottom here. Um, we've got more posts show up on the side. If you wanna look through those. Uh, and then you can choose to load older updates or see the next page in the digest. And there's that affiliate disclaimer and her footer. Uh, she's got some modifications that are gonna show up on the individual posts as well. Of course, here's that header, that sidebar content. But then she also has an individual post footer that shows up as well. So, yeah, this is, uh, what it looks like. So your blog, uh, is going to, uh, your blog digest, that is your website slash blog on Get Oiling is gonna show all of your blog posts. That's why we recommend you using the excerpt feature so that people can really kind of scroll through based on what they're interested in. But there's also a way, let's just say, for instance, we wanna see all of the posts that Terry wrote about affirmations. If she has tagged those posts with affirmations, then they're all going to show up in a single line, right? Uh, in this case, uh, there is just this one. Right? Uh, which is great. Uh, but if she had more, they would show up as a list as well. So if you ever have, so let's just say, for instance, you have a lot of blog posts and you're writing about a few different topics. Uh, maybe you want to have a page that displays just all of your posts about lifestyle. Whatever pages are tagged with lifestyle, you can see we have blog slash tag slash lifestyle up here at the top. That is where you're going to be able to maybe even share a page, uh, that shows all of your, um, your blog posts that are about that particular topic. So you do have the general one, but you can, using tags on your blog posts, uh, share more specifically. Uh, are you guys not seeing this thing that I was doing here? Um, yeah, so here's the, this is, uh, Terry's posts where, um, she has selected lifestyle. So if you see up here up top, blog, tag, lifestyle. Everything that she has done that pertains to lifestyle shows up here, but more generally, we can go to just her website slash blog. And it's gonna show everything. There we go. Okay, you guys, thank you for sticking around. I hope you are so excited about this new video feature. I can't wait to hear what you do with it. And if you have a video that shares young living, that you would like to maybe make available to folks in the community. Uh, or if you wanna share something that you found, uh, that is available publicly, uh, then pop into the Facebook group. And, uh, let's see if we can collaborate on those resources. Again, you don't have to be the person delivering it. It is better for you to edify someone else doing the talking. So let's put our heads together and create some of those, and you guys can get super effective on how you share. Look forward to working with you next week. We'll see you then. Take care, everybody.